Okay, so, so I can find my pen here. We have Councilmember Kennedy, Councilmember Kennedy, can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Foyer.
Hi.
Here.
Councilmember Receivers?
Present.
You're on. Councilmember Dunn, there, I see him. Uh, Councilmember Kurtz, I see. And Councilmember Kamiskas. Okay, seven o'clock, we are going to get started. I know that one of the councilmember is, uh, sorry?
No, I'm sorry.
Can I say something? Okay. So, I'll do the, my typical reading before we get started. Uh, welcome to our 2018-2020 City Council meeting. Uh, for, this meeting is being held remotely. I'd like to go over a few of the logistics, so we can have a productive meeting, consistent with Governor Enzi's orders 20-288 dated July 31st, 2020, and the continuation of his safe start, stay healthy directive. All public meetings continue to be held remotely. We are following the directions of that order. On this agenda are routine and necessary actions for our council to consider. We also will provide two opportunities for the public to provide comments. Joining me in the council chambers are myself, Mayor Burkner, State Administrator Katie Allen, City Clerk Anne Swenson, Police Chief Brian Asmus, uh, Sergeant Morgan, Finance Director RJ Stevenson, IT Support Todd Henderson, uh, Activities and Events Coordinator Anita Eiler. Uh, as I mentioned, Todd will be the manager of the Zoom meeting. Uh, we'll be taking roll call here shortly. Um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, we'll have a couple of opportunities for citizen comments. When that time comes, uh, I will acknowledge public participation, in which you have up to three minutes. For the record, please let us know your name and if you are a City of Liberty Lake resident or not. But to participate in a Zoom meeting, the public can so indicate if they feel like they need to make a citizen comment by choosing the chat feature, uh, on Zoom, and which time Todd will acknowledge that. Uh, finally, anyone who is not speaking will be muted until it is time for you to speak. So, with that being said, uh, the first item is the invocation. So we'll get started with that. God or Father, I thank you for all the guidance and blessings that you provide us each and every day. I ask that you watch over all of those individuals, uh, that are working hard to keep us safe, uh, provide us services, and, uh, make sure our community thrives forward in a positive direction. And I ask that you give us all guidance to make the best decision possible for our citizens. In Jesus' name, amen. Alright, we will now do the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, so we got that squared away. So I will call the, let's see. We'll call the meeting to order. I'll do a quick roll call for the record. Mayor, Mayor Proton Kennedy?
I was going to mention that, um, Councilman Langford had contacted yourself and myself that he would not be able to attend tonight. Asked to be excused.
Okay, so after we get done with the rest of the roll call, we'll do a motion to excuse. So, we heard, we just heard from, uh, Mayor Proton Kennedy. Uh, Councilmember Foyer? Councilmember Receivers?
Present.
Councilmember Dunn?
Good evening.
Councilmember Kurtz? And Councilmember Kamiskas?
Here.
Uh, also joining us is Sean Bouts, are you on the call?
I'm here.
Thank you, sir. I believe we also have Jocelyn on the call, uh, Ben Schmidt, I see him, uh, Lisa Keys, I see. And Jennifer Camp, I see as well. Okay, so, Councilmember, or Mayor Proton Kennedy, if you'd like to make your motion to excuse?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to excuse, uh, Councilman Langford, uh, he did contact us and asked to be excused for this evening.
Uh, for what reason?
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, family? Had a family issue?
Wonderful, there's a second.
Thank you.
We have a second from Councilmember Kamiskas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Not hearing any? Uh, Councilmember Langford's excused. Alright, agenda approval. Mayor Proton Kennedy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, uh, for the council's consideration that's been requested that we add, in addition to the agenda approval, and it would be under 6A for special recognition.
So that would call, uh, before citizen comments?
Uh, yes.
Is there any detail, is there any detail on the, uh, recognition?
It would become very obvious. It was, the recommendation was to get 6A.
Oh, okay.
With that agenda, um, can we get a, uh, second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, this special recognition, uh, Councilmember Dunn, uh, to answer your question, is a recognition to honor Chief Brian Asmus. We had to keep it a surprise to him a little bit. Um, uh, we want to honor him for his services to the community. Uh, we knew that he might expect it on September 1st, so, uh, hence we moved it forward a little bit. So, a little bit of a surprise, and as you can see, he is joined by his family here as well. Um, so, we have a, uh, a video that we have put together, uh, that we will play at this time. If we can get it going.
While it's going, getting ready to go, uh, Mayor, I was going to mention, Brian did not want the special recognition, so I had to do this secretly. And he's giving me the evil eye. Check this mic?
Just make sure it's on.
Let me say that again?
No. We got the video? Okay.
Whoa.
Look at that. We are working on some sounds, if you can, can you pause that?
Whoa.
Okay. Think we're ready. You got it figured out, Todd? Okay.
Hey Chief, as you know, I get a bit emotional when I talk about people I care about. You are one of those people, hence why I'm wearing sunglasses. But I really want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything you've done for our community. You are a staple in this community, you're a great leader, you're an amazing friend. I appreciate all of our conversations and, uh, mentorship that you've provided for me. And I am really excited for what next for you, and, uh, with everything that you're going to be doing with Carol and the family. So, enjoy your retirement, and thank you.
Whoa. Oh, yeah.
Hi Brian, this is Katie. Your departure from Liberty Lake going to Central Valley School District is bittersweet for us. The good news is you're not very far, and we know where you live, so, um, we can find you. But I just don't want you to leave or walk out the door without me sharing with you some personal comments about how remarkable you are as our police chief. You've been here 20 years, and I would describe your contributions to our community as remarkable. I would also say that you are a problem solver, a joy to work with, you have great leadership skills. And last but not least, most notable is, you like to cruise and you shared that experience with myself and my husband and I now. Really, really enjoy, uh, going on cruises. So, best wishes to you, Carol, your grandkids, your whole family. Um, you will not be forgotten, and you are a legend in our community. Thank you.
Very good, very good.
Hey Chief, it's hard to express all the appreciation that we have for you and what you've done for this department and the city as a whole, especially in 10 to 20 seconds, but I just want to let you know how much we appreciate you, how much we're really going to miss you around here, and how much I appreciate all the guidance and everything that you've provided us over the years. Thanks Chief, wish you the best of luck, and if you ever need anything, don't hesitate to call. Thanks Chief, talk to you later.
I understand that you're retiring, lucky you, just wanted to wish you all the best. Um, don't have a lot of stories, but it's really cool that you can always find something to rhyme with Georgette in the Christmas poem. Very best of luck always, it's been a pleasure.
Hi Brian, congratulations on your retirement. From everyone at Special Olympics Washington and the Law Enforcement Torch Run Campaign, thank you for the decades of dedication that you provided to Special Olympics. I personally had the opportunity to work with you through some very interesting times. USA Games, polar plunge without an actual body of water, uh, many international conferences, state conferences, too many presentations to count. Uh, but it has been such an honor, and we're so grateful for all of the support. So on behalf of the 19,500 Special Olympics Washington athletes, all of the staff at Special Olympics, uh, thank you and Carol for all of the years of support, and good luck in the next chapter.
Hey Brian, uh, just want to congratulate you on retirement from one director of the Law Enforcement Torch Run to another. All of us on the executive committee want to wish you a very happy retirement and best wishes.
Hi, my name is Christina Berry, and I am a Washington Special Olympics athlete. I've been part of the Special Olympics since I was eight years old. My first sport was track. Now it's bowling, skiing, foxy ball, and golf. Chief Brian Asmus, on the behalf of almost 20,000 athletes in Washington, I want to congratulate you on your retirement. We are grateful for your support over the last 20 years, and wish you the very best. Thank you so much.
Miss, thank you. Thank you for making yourself available as a leader and a mentor, not only to your officers and your staff at the police department, but to all of us. Your, your presence at City Hall, it just makes the city feel more like a family. Thank you for including me. Um, it's been an honor to run with your family, to pluck with your team, to compare ugly sweaters, and witness your Christmas poems, which will forever go down in history. The life and energy that you bring to the city will definitely be missed. I wish you so much happiness in your future endeavors. I know that you and Carol have so many good works to do, so much left in you to do them, so keep in touch, let us know what's going on, because this place isn't going to be the same without you.
Well, hi Chief. What a good you, all smiles, relaxed, and ready for your next adventure. That's, that's great. Hey, um, I don't have a lot of time to roast you, otherwise, you know that I would do that. Uh, so instead, I'd like to congratulate you on, on your retirement, uh, wish you well. Uh, thank you for everything that you've done for me, for the department, for the community. Uh, you know, you exemplify the best in, in law enforcement, and I really appreciate that. Um, we, we, uh, we will see each other, so this is not a goodbye, this is more a, a see you later alligator. And, um, but I wish you well, take care, and we'll see you soon. Peace, brother.
Hey Chief, congratulations on your early retirement. Thank you for being you, thank you for being so open-minded and humble. To be able to start a police department and then stay there for 19 years is unheard of, so I think the City Council owes you a huge gratitude for that. I look forward to working with you around the schools in the upcoming years, and we'll see you around. Thank you.
Chief Asmus, I, uh, I have truly enjoyed the last 20 years working with you. You are such a class act, and you are the embodiment of your public service. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you, and I wish you the best of luck in your new career, where you will still be serving the public, um, Iraq.
Hey Chief, it's Tuan.
Hey Chief, it's Jordan.
We want to say thank you for everything and giving us the opportunity for work for the police department that you built.
We want to say good luck to you and your, and your next ventures, and, uh, we just want to wish you the best of luck, and we'll always be, uh, watching you.
Yep, we'll keep everything safe. See you later, Chief.
Name's David Ellis, I'm the Chief of the Spokane Valley Police Department. I just want to take a few minutes to congratulate, uh, Chief Brian Asmus on his upcoming retirement. Brian, over the years, I have appreciated your role and steady leadership, and that you've guided the Liberty Lake Police Department during informative years to the agency it is today. I wish you the best of luck for, uh, future employment at Central Valley School District, and I look forward to working with you. Congrats again, and wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Chief, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for what you've done for the community, the department, and for each of us individually. Your leadership is really going to be hard to replace. You are definitely going to be missed. I wish you and your, your family the best of luck on your next adventure, and we will see you out there. Enjoy life, my friend.
Um, I, look at this. Grandpa, I'm glad you were a police officer. Now you get to be in charge of more stuff. I love you.
You say congratulations to grandpa on his retirement?
I say since grandpa on the time. What's a time? Hi, Grandpa, I love you.
Hey Dad, congratulations on your retirement.
Congratulations, Dad.
We love you. Hi Dad, congratulations on retirement. We love you so much, and we wish you the best of luck. We love you.
I love you Dad. Thank you so much for everything you've done for me, and congratulations on your retirement. I love you.
Congratulations Brian on your retirement, for all the years of service. Thank you for keeping us all safe, and we welcome your new adventures and want to be part of it. Congratulations.
Congratulations Brian, we're super proud of you.
Well, then, retirement. How are you even old enough? Who would have known that 30-plus years ago, when I was funny and selfish enough to say, "Okay, you can become a police officer," and I brought home that application for reserve officer, that we would end up where we are now. You've worked so hard to move up through the ranks to become the great chief that you are today. I am so very proud and grateful for this blue family life you've given us. Opportunity knocked when Liberty Lake was being incorporated and looking for a police chief. You were given a desk, and a little room, and said, "Build us a police department," and look what it's become now. Your great leadership, and your kindness, and the way you give back to the community, has touched so many lives. But now opportunity has knocked again. About six months earlier than planned, honestly, but, as we know, new adventures can lead to the best things. Looking forward to this new path with you. Congratulations. I love you more. You did it.
Okay.
Whoa. Come on, man. Yeah. Yeah.
Very good, very good.
So now, we wanted to give the City Council an opportunity to say a few words to Chief as well, uh, for those that would like to do so. Uh, as you can imagine, this COVID thing is a, is a tough thing to honor somebody like him, so we wanted to do this. If we hadn't been able to do it in person in Orchard Park, the whole park would have been filled with an entire community, so. Who would like to go first?
Pick me, pick me. Oh, come on. Hey, look, um, I just got to say, uh, I have the greatest of admiration and respect for, uh, Chief Brian Asmus's leadership style. Um, that I have been exposed to, what the actions of law enforcement, through my getting to know a lot more, you know, my role and working with Brian, and to understand how it is that he does and works with, uh, men that stand in the, uh, face of danger, um, is just awesome. And, and then on top of that, like, close behind is his leadership, not only like, in like, the roles of his professional career, but out there in the community, in, um, I'm going to say, um, advocacy for like, um, Special Olympics, um, our local Rotary and all these other things that he runs out there and commits his time and energy to. And it's awe-inspiring, and it leads by example for everybody, and so, um, but I totally look forward to all the amazing things that are going to happen at Central Valley Schools that are coming up, so, thank you, Brian.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Kamiskas?
I totally suck at this, so I better just go ahead and do it. Brian, thank you so much for all you've done for the city. Um, you know, I, I've enjoyed getting to know you over the past 12-ish years or so, but, you know, what amazes me is, is the amazing team you've been able to put together, uh, and how much this community absolutely respects those officers and you. Um, and it, it's just going to be so hard to fill your shoes. I think I said to you before, I'm going to be in denial about this for years. Um, glad I'm not on the selection committee, because big, big shoes to fill, um, but like Katie said, we know where you live, we know where to find you. Um, and hopefully we'll see you, see you around even more often, now that you'll have a little bit more, at least free time on the weekends, we hope.
Councilmember Foyer?
Yeah Chief, congratulations with the city, and best wishes moving forward. Um, I'm sure we'll see you around town. So does this mean we guys are calling you Chief, or can we still do that?
Councilmember Receivers? Councilmember Receivers, I believe I heard you.
You did. Well, Chief, uh, one, congratulations, but two, uh, I'm so thankful that you're going to be protecting our children. So, just, uh, wonderful, you're still going to be doing great things in the community, and, um, and thank you for everything you've done for our community.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Brian, uh, I hope I can get through this, okay? Not only you're a good police officer, not only you've been great for the city, but as you know, Betty and I had a child with special needs. Through the, through all the years of 50-some-odd marriage, it's been not a lot that I've been able to see individuals who went above and beyond what we call of helping other individuals. I think the word hero is thrown out so flippantly nowadays, that it doesn't, a lot of people don't put a lot of faith in it. But I want you to know something. I don't have a lot of heroes in my life, but you and your lovely wife are true heroes, because of what you've done for Special Olympics, and those individuals that can't help themselves, and they need assistance from other individuals, so I know you guys will continue in that capacity. Betty and I will do the same. God bless you, all of you. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Well, it's hard to follow that. Um, but my first exposure to Chief was in his elf costume, um, my kids, and it was marvelous, and I think that, um, any man, any woman, but he's a man, so, um, any police officer, chief, who can come to work in a elf costume and make things magical for kids, um, but also lead a police department for 20 years, um, with amazing officers, and one of the safest cities in the state of Washington. Um, it's just remarkable what you've done, um, and I thank you, and I thank your family, um, because I know that, um, I don't know personally, but, um, being a police officer, um, generally is a very difficult thing, um, and thank you so much for your service, and I am, I'm feeling very thankful that you're going to be a part of our community with the school district, and good luck to you. Enjoy your retirement.
Okay, um, we are going to have an opportunity for citizens, uh, that are joining us, that would like to make any comments. Uh, I'm going a little off-script. So if there are citizens or those involved, uh, in this meeting, if you would like to say something, please, uh, either raise your hand if I can see you, or hit the chat button. I know we have, uh, some people here. I'm sure, uh, Jay would like to say a few words. If we can, uh, can you unmute Jay for me? Todd? You might, you might have to unmute yourself, Jay. You might, you might have to unmute yourself Jay. There we go. Yep.
Hey, hey Hughes, Kalispel Tribal Police and also the, uh, East Region Co-Director for Special Olympics. Chief Asmus and I have been friends for many years, both professionally. And friends and this man is, um, goes above and beyond. He, uh, what he sets out to do. Great chief, a great leader. Good with people and Liberty Lake is going to have some hard times trying to fill issue the next chief for the, uh, city of Liberty Lake. Brian, I wish you and your family the best of luck in your, your next step in your, uh, school district work. I still want to see you stay safe and we love you.
Thanks Jay. Are there any other citizens that are on that would like to say anything? And let me know by hitting the chat button. This might be hard for those that are strictly calling in. There was a, uh, email that was sent by a citizen that we wanted to make sure that Chief got, uh, so we can read that. Might have to send it to you.
Oh. Okay, I will find it. Is it in my outlook? Okay. I will read it with great.
I can read it. I think, I think.
Okay, so this is from a resident in our community, Dick Canfield. And, uh, Dick put this together for Chief Brian Asmus. I am truly sorry to miss your public recognition this evening. You have long been my example of how a proper training program, the setting of goals and good leadership skills can produce the positive results you have achieved these twenty years as our Liberty Lake Chief of Police. Not only have you raised a success bar for our local community, but you have also shared your knowledge and expertise with our department across the state. It gives me additional pleasure, personal pleasure to thank you for your input and leadership as a board member for the City Insurance Association. The CIA project is just one more way that you continue to help and assist those around you. The residents of Liberty Lake are in much better place for having had you as a police chief as well as being our friend. Thank you.
Okay, I believe, uh, Ben Schmidt would like to say a few words.
Chief, I've only known you for a short time and I appreciate you welcoming me into the city. Uh, your integrity and your kindness is incredibly evident from every interaction that I've had with you. And, uh, yeah, it's really impressive. So thank you for setting the bar so high and, uh, for making the city the great place that it is.
Okay. Anybody else that would like to make a comment? Todd, I don't know that everybody's joining via computer. It might just be on phone. If we can just do a complete unmute. We had an entire plan and script for this, but I'm, I want to give people the ability to say something. Gives me an opportunity to compose myself. Uh, okay, I think we've got everybody unmuted for the most part. Tom? I don't know if Tom can hear me. Muted himself? Did he mute him? Uh, Richard.
Sorry, I was unmuted. I, I don't have anything more to say other than thank you, Chief.
Okay. Okay, so we have a, uh, uh, thank you for Chief, uh, with his family here that I want to present to him. So I will go to that mic. Hopefully it's on.
I'm hoping you've been driving, uh, stage one, you've been waiting.
Is it on? Okay. So this is a, um, a small token to Chief. I was, we talked about doing a poem, but, uh, nobody here is going to achieve this in doing poems. We are going to have a, uh, a great, uh, event, uh, at the end of the month on August twenty ninth at two P M. Uh, they pray for all the citizens within the community to thank you. And as I mentioned, it's very tough to, excuse me. It's very tough to, in this environment, in the situation we're in. Chief, thanks for touching everybody in the air. He truly embodies what I have mine when I thought about the group together. He cares about everybody with his whole heart. Is police officer staff, uh, for the police department. I've worked with and seen police chiefs across the country. And I've never seen an individual with more character, more love, and more appreciation for the people who work there. They can pay out. He always keeps me on my toes. I thought I had six more months to press for this. But, uh, somebody else is going to be just as blessed with how much he's touched this community. I can't wait to see what he does in his next role. I know it's going to be amazing. I know it's going to change the world and help me not in the city that we live in. So Chief, on behalf of everybody in this community, so I can stop talking. Thank you.
Hi, Chair. Uh, so this was a surprise. So, uh, thanks for all the kind words. Um, thanks for my family being here. It means a lot. Other than that, it's your fault. So just a couple fun stories actually. So one is when my, uh, family learned about this uh, opportunity for Central Valley School District. It's a little funny because I can remember just a thing. One of my daughters saying, I came in and said, "Dad, why, why wouldn't you want that job?" Like, I think it's an amazing opportunity. I mean, it's the drug for safety for a centralized closure. He said, "Chief, that seems like a lot of responsibility." Because right now, uh, not much is responsible. Uh, and I thought that that was funny. Um, and so really, you know, the best thing that we can do, I think, is, um, in a leadership position, is try to grow new leaders. Um, hopefully I have done a good job of that, um, with our, our police departments. And, uh, thank you. And then, um, you know, finally, one of the, uh, the things they try to do also, um, as you lead a profession, is to leave a legacy. And, um, I, hopefully I have done that by, uh, building the, the police department to what it is today. And my legacy truly is to be, um, these few that are representing the rest of the officers. Um, but that is truly, um, what I'm, I'm by most proud of is, uh, being a member of the Lincoln Great Hands and have a group of officers that care about the community and will serve the utmost of integrity. And so that's my legacy to this community and thank you to all of you for your kind words and surprise. Uh, last thing, and it's all I think about Special Olympics on there. Uh, had a good, good time working with Special Olympics, um, made a difference in people's lives. And I was recognized when there weren't up there, which is just because I, um, I received an award from Special Olympics called Unsummed Hero Award. The Unsummed Hero Award is just people who recognize for doing things they don't want to have recognition for. And so I didn't have a real stud that award, um, uh, probably accepted it. Uh, but I think I play zero sense of meaning that that award even exists. But, uh, thanks to all of you, thanks to you here, all the council members, uh, Katie, all the staff. And again, of course, my family for being here, being watched. Um, and again, all the officers, um, I've seen where I live because you're part of the uh, but please, uh, you know, as I, I said, is, you know, be safe, take care of each other. Thank you.
Thank you. So as a reminder, uh, for everybody joining us, there will be a parade on August twenty ninth at two P M. With staging at Selkirk Middle School around one forty. Uh, the flyer can be seen on the city's Facebook page as well as the website. And the flyer, I believe Todd was going to put up as well, maybe. There it is. That handsome face. I always, I always, uh, you guys hear me talk a lot about Chief and his, uh, his, his leadership and mentorship to me. He's a, you know, how he's like a brother. Uh, and I jokingly say like a father. Uh, he doesn't like that so much, but we can see that the job ages you. So it's a tease me. Teasing, teasing, teasing. Um, but, uh, he is a, an individual that, uh, will stay in all of our minds forever. Some people just touch you in, in a way that you'll never forget about them. And, uh, we'll obviously see him in the community and, uh, his beautiful family. And, and they'll always continue to be engaged. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what is next for Chief. So thank you, Chief. And so as Chief would say, back to business. Okay. So, uh, we have regular citizen comments now for any citizens that would like to any, make any comments. If you're, if you're ready, whether it's Chief related or just city business related. Again, just, uh, let us know by hitting the chat button. You'll have another opportunity after the council meeting to make any comments. Hearing any or seeing any? We're doing a quick picture with Chief and his family. So stand by for one second. We want to capture this moment with their, their family. For those that couldn't see it, it's a, a beautiful eagle with, uh, inscription on it to the chief. Okay, so as, as we continue with the pictures, I want to move on to the Marion City Council reports and inquiries. Uh, any council? I'm trying to delay this a little bit. To make sure we have all the council back. Okay. Any council reports?
Hey, this is Dan. I'd just make another, uh, uh, great moment here for our community in the trails, right? That over there next to the Salty Uplands where we have a, you know, county park. They've actually recently extended now out onto the flats. And so if you drive out Henry, uh, south along outside the city boundaries. But, um, there's a beautiful wandering trail. I'll call it, um, half mile, one and a half, maybe two miles in length, which crosses, uh, that greater, greater part of that flat area. And the beautiful evenings that we have at hand here, it's a great social distancing thing to get out there and, uh, take in the trails that are in our community. So yeah, go check out the, the Salty Flats Trail.
Okay. And the other, uh, Premier Lieutenant Kennedy, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. Uh, I attended a Zoom meeting. I, I think Katie, you were on this one also. Again, Valley Chamber of Commerce on August tenth. And on the agenda was general election promotion slash current, giving information about the election. Uh, it did come out that like thirty-nine percent of the county voted on the election. But one of the things they were talking about was upcoming elections, which for us will be, uh, this next year. For councils, they're planning on to have two forum. They feel that that has been successful in the past, want to do it again. Um, the priority was a discussion. Um, that was pretty much it. But the exciting thing is that they will continue on with the forums for the elections. Thank you.
Any other, uh, city council reports or inquiries? Uh, Mayor Lieutenant Kennedy.
Thank you. Yes, I have two inquiries and one is that request. Uh, it's interesting that I had the notes down here to request this to me for a meeting to put on the agenda. But I, I love the term a low hanging fruit. When I look at the, what the priorities are for the city, there are some things, major priority that we can't move ahead without taking care of some of the additional things. My recommendation is to get on the agenda for this next meeting, two items. One would be discussing how in fact, if we're going to move forward with doing something with City Hall. And the second would be look at the reports that we had with the acreage, twenty-three acres upon the hill. And also the six or six and a half acres we have at Town Square. Thank you.
Councilmember Kamiskas.
Yeah, again, sorry for the lighting issues. I haven't quite figured that out. Um, just a, a quick note and I, oh, I'm only bringing it up here because I didn't have a chance to send it, um, to, I'm assuming probably Jen and/or Lisa and Katie. A citizen reached out to me over the weekend. There's a spot on the paved path in front of Liberty Creek. That is, uh, there's a fairly decent sized crack, so much so that when, um, this gal's husband was pushing mother-in-law in her wheelchair, they hit that crack and the mother-in-law fell out of the wheelchair. Um, so if somebody could go take a look at that, it isn't, is in the paved path. Um, not, not a school, um, not a sidewalk that the school would be responsible for.
Okay.
Thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Fuhrer.
Uh, yeah, I don't see anywhere in the agenda where we're going to talk about finances tonight. Is this the time for any questions regarding that?
It will be in Katie's report.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I think, uh, Bill with the Water District, District had a, is that right? I want to, I think he had a comment he wanted to make. Bill? No? Nope, never, never mind. Sorry. It was, here, false alarm. Uh, so we, this last farmer's market, we had great attendance, uh, a lot of public engagement, uh, at the city booth. We had a number of, uh, adults and kids alike that, uh, came and, uh, gave us their thoughts on things around the city. Anywhere from, um, public safety, uh, pedestrian safety, um, growth. Uh, so it was, it was a really good opportunity to hear from them and, uh, look forward to continuing to get citizen engagement as we talk about some of the topic items that we've, uh, discussed in, other sessions, other, uh, other things before COVID hit. One of the things that we had talked about in the past with the city council was, uh, looking at, uh, providing, uh, some services, uh, to our staff, um, for, um, times of stress, uh, not only making sure that, uh, they have everything that they need to make their, do their jobs effectively, but also being cognizant of them as individuals. Um, and the, uh, environment that we're in. And we know how much impact that can have on all of us, uh, to effectively do our jobs, but the, the mental side of it as well. And we had talked to you guys about a citizen that said that they would, uh, like to make themselves available. Uh, that to meet with staff members if they have moments of stress. Um, and we're finalizing those pieces of that. Uh, so staff can go talk to this individual, uh, when they need it. Uh, she's graciously volunteering her time, uh, to help those staff members out, uh, throughout our entire city's, uh, group. Uh, but that got me thinking about, uh, kind of the environment that we're in. And, uh, the situation with schools, um, the situation with, uh, not living, being able to quote unquote, live, uh, a normal state of life that we're used to. And, uh, so one of the ideas that kind of, uh, popped into my head was our youth, uh, and how they're doing through all this. So I started to bounce some ideas off, uh, some different individuals to include Ben Small, uh, about, uh, working on providing a list of counselors that might want to volunteer some time to be available for our youth during all of this. Uh, this is a, a tough time when you can't go back to school. This is a tough time when you can't get out with your friends. Um, this is a tough time for kids that can't go places that they're used to being involved in through the school system. Um, and in talking with Ben from the school district, he thought it was a great, uh, opportunity for us to all partner up with, uh, to make resources available, uh, for kids that are having challenging times. So there's more to come on that. We're working out logistical pieces to that. And we'll continue those conversations, uh, to make those things available. Uh, but I want to, uh, make sure you guys, uh, knew that those were some of the things that we've been talking about. Is the mental wellbeing of our, our youth, uh, within the city, uh, as well as our, our staff. So, and it may expand from there. Um, so individually, I'd love to hear your input, uh, for other ideas, um, of how we can be a resource, uh, to those in our community. So, uh, any questions on, on any of that? Okay.
Hey Shane, uh, quick observation. Um, be sure to reach out to, um, Chloe and Natalie, our youth commission. Um, observations and thoughts from them, you know, that have stepped forward in leadership roles as youth in the community might be pretty helpful. So just be sure to check in with them.
Great idea. Thank you, Councilmember Dan. I appreciate that. Okay. Any other council comments that might have popped into your head? Okay. Not hearing any. We will move on to the city administrator report.
Mayor Joe Genaway indicated, um, by text that he wanted, he had, uh, some information. So I think we've unmuted him now. And Joe, can you hear us?
He's, Bill, you're unmuted, so we can, we should be able to hear you. Okay.
Okay.
Well, we'll keep going and, uh, see if we can get that resolved.
Okay.
Um, can you, uh, someone reach out to Bill? You can shoot him a private message, Todd, just to see if there's any, if he's able to talk. So we'll move on to the city administrator report.
Um, thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to go through these fairly quickly. And, um, Councilmember Forrester, we're going to add finance update under, um, after number six, if that's all right. Uh, RJ is going to give, provide an update at that time. So I'll go ahead and get started with, uh, the first item on the list, which is the Liberty Lake Road, um, overlay project. This started on Monday, whereas tomorrow will be day three. So far, so good. It's going well. Um, we, I, all of you can, um, I think appreciate, we still were seeing a little bit more traffic on the detour route, but no complaints so far. And so that's always good when you start closing a road in the middle of the day. That's sometimes an indication, but the crew out there is doing an excellent job. Um, under the public works bracket, just a very quick update. The investigation is ongoing. We don't have anything formal to report. Uh, the insurance points have been filed and, and, and/or we're working with the insurance company. And then also the equipment replacement, um, as you know, we had a good sized truck that was taken, stolen. Um, we need that truck or a similar type truck for snow removal. So we have a loaner that we have right now that, um, the cost of the loaner is being covered by our insurance company. And I'd say in a next council meeting, um, we may be asking for permission from the council to move forward with the, uh, purchase of a new vehicle. Um, we know if we go to the state contract, it takes a little bit longer and we're concerned. Um, when the snow finds, we need to have this piece of equipment available to us. So we're trying to move quickly to get the replacement. And we are going to do a competitive bid as opposed to a state contract for a, a, um, truck of equal value. Um, I'm going to now turn it over to Jocelyn. She's going to give you a quick update on the, from the library.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to check in, let you know what the library is doing. Um, we've been continuing to do our holds pickup service. It's not the same as everybody being able to come in and browse for the books, but we do have several people in our community taking advantage of this service. So that's wonderful. Um, and then behind the scenes, we are continuing to work on projects that have come from our one-year work plan and our, our needs assessment strategic plan project last year. Things like collection projects, um, determining and evaluating different priorities for programming and things like that. Um, we're also continuing to plan our programs for the fall. Um, we're looking at continuing with online programming and doing a bunch of take and go or take and make type of programs. Um, and then later this month in August, we're actually doing a online learning and homeschool information night. That's August 26th at 6:30. Um, there's just so much going on and with the school districts right now and with, um, you know, just articles that we're seeing about families considering homeschool that we thought this would be a good time for us to pull some people together, see what we can offer in terms of information. Um, and then we've added homeschool resources onto our website, help people with that. Um, we are contributing to the chalk and walk event that is happening this September. So the video that is posted on Facebook, Jenny put that together for us. And, uh, we are, just an FYI, we are going to be closed for holds pickup on the 20th. That's this Thursday. We are doing an all-day staff training day for the library. And then, uh, there, if you go to Rocky Hill Park, there is a new story in the story walk. So take a look at that. And last thing, um, earlier this year, you guys approved the Friends of the Library donation of shelving. We are now starting to get some of the pieces for that. So, um, hopefully within the next week or so, we'll have our shelving and be working on getting it installed. And that is, uh, the update of what's going on at the library.
Any questions for Jocelyn? Not hearing any. Kate?
Okay. So moving along, just a quick update on some COVID-related items. We distributed masks to our residents on Friday, last Friday. Twenty-four box or containers holding 50 masks each were distributed. We'll probably do this again, um, after Labor Day. So again, I think our community is very, very appreciative of the CARES Act dollars and the, the distribution of these masks. Um, in addition, we provide masks at farmer's markets, um, to individuals that are in need of a mask.
Councilmember Dan, I really feel.
Hey, I just wanted, yeah, thanks. I just want to say props to Tate Hunter out there with the handout. I mean, a smiling face in our community. So really appreciate the staff.
Thank you.
Councilmember Forrester?
Yeah, question re- related to that topic. Uh, I was going to save it for, uh, RJ, but it's appropriate now. As I look at, uh, a report that RJ put out July, for July revenue expenses, um, our Corona, uh, relief fund is 330. Only use like seven percent. What's the plan for the remaining funds? Are we going elsewhere with it? Or have you had any further discussions about what to do best?
So we, we are, so the answer is we are, we do have a plan to spend it. We do have, um, what we collected today, I think we saw about seven percent. That's what we billed back in June. Uh, we did, uh, there is another invoice we haven't gets paid yet, which was about 80,000. So that would bring us to almost one-third of that money spent. And that's through, um, that's through mid-July. We will have a, or that's through July. We will have another invoice going to, um, Commerce coming out by later this week, early next. Uh, I believe kind of estimating that to be around the $30,000 mark. So between those few items, probably closer to 40, 45%. Um, one of the items for your consideration tonight, uh, is firewall. Um, with hiring our IT Todd and his review of our, uh, infrastructure, the firewall is a concern. Um, it's a $16,000 ask, but one thing, because we are in an environment, um, where we're having more people working offsite and a lot more activity, um, having to go into our, uh, the network from outside sources, uh, that, uh, we want to beef up that firewall. That would also be a COVID-related, uh, expenditure. Um, and then as we move forward towards, uh, going into September, October, we'll be looking for other, um, opportunities for, for the COVID dollars. Um, so I, I think we're, the way we're progressing right now, I'm looking at probably like 65, 70%. So we set up about 30% of that money to figure out, uh, how we're going to spend it or if we need to spend it.
And there, I will add to that, there are, uh, communications that those dollars, uh, may be extended out, uh, beyond the October date. Um, but even without that, if you guys have, have ideas, uh, please, 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 uh, feel free to reach out to, uh, Katie, RJ, or myself on how you think we can utilize those dollars. We have had some different entities reach out to us, um, that, uh, of different things that they're offering. Um, some of which you may hear about on the news, uh, with different, uh, organizations within their, our Spokane County area. Um, uh, some of the concerns was that those dollars may not stay within, uh, and how would you be able to control that those dollars would stay within our community to support our community? Um, and just the, the mere, uh, fact of controlling how they utilize it appropriately as well. So that's something we're being very cognizant of, but very open-minded. Uh, if you have thoughts or ideas, so please, please, please. Not just with that, but with anything, uh, don't ever hesitate to, uh, reach out.
Thank you.
Along those lines, there's a grant program that the county's running and also the valley. And just want to mention that all our businesses are eligible to apply. I also want to mention that they've had about a 50% participation rate. So they're going to open it up again. And that is, um, being mandatory. And so, um, those grant opportunities are for small businesses and they have more money than they have applicants. So this is my opportunity to share with you and the community that there is, um, some resources available to small businesses with CARES Act dollars. And those dollars were actually allocated to Spokane County.
And, and I will say, just as a, an additional note, in talking with, continuing, uh, with communication with our local businesses and citizens alike, uh, we have, uh, heard great response from them of how we're utilizing those dollars and they greatly appreciate it. Uh, from the, uh, ability of restaurants and other facilities to extend their seating to outside, uh, to being able to get PPE here, which is a, another continuation of challenges that the business face. Uh, and then providing other masks, uh, to people within our community. Uh, we've, we've had, had great responses, uh, to date, um, of how, how appreciative they all are. Um, so, uh, we want to be somewhat cognizant that if those, these dollars are extended, uh, that we want to be able to continue to provide those services that are still highly needed, uh, for our businesses. That A, may not be able to afford it, uh, B, can't find it, or, uh, for the citizens as well that need masks. And, and we've, honestly, it really helps us to, uh, continue that, uh, safe, safe peace, uh, within our community and set that example. Uh, we've had, uh, we had quite a few citizens that came up to us during farmer's market even, uh, that didn't have a mask available. And they would, we had some there and so they would come get them and put them on while they were at farmer's market, which, you know, we greatly appreciate. That we're all doing our part to continue to make our community as safe as possible.
So, um, um, Councilmember Forrester, did that answer your question? Okay. Um, we'll put together, um, RJ, at our next council meeting on September 1st, we'll put together kind of a status report on where we are with the CARES Act dollars. So, um, we'll be able to share with council, kind of how much we've, uh, how much we spent of the 330,000. So the other thing that we just wanted to remind everyone is as of today, the governor's status quo meeting on public meetings is through September 1st. So that's our next council meeting day. And again, it's the order to have, um, remotely held public meetings. And then finally, um, the Spokane County average case count of COVID is declining. And so that's good news. The challenge is that the thresholds for the metrics, uh, were not there yet. And today, this morning, Chief and I listened to, uh, the numbers. And the numbers, the metrics they call them is 25 cases per 100,000 for two weeks. We're about halfway there. So this is not great news. The good news is we're declining, but, um, we continue to monitor what the requirements are. And so I'm just being very honest with everyone that the numbers are not exactly where we are. So we're, you know, the likelihood that we're going to be in phase two for a while here at the city, um, remains in place. I will say there are the different metric numbers that the schools are using. And Dr. Lox is working on those with the school district, the different, uh, counting, um, metric that they have to use. But there's so many other variables. And so, um, I won't belabor the point, but, uh, the good news is we're, the numbers are declining. The challenging news, we're not close to phase three at this point. Um, I'm going to move on to item number five, which is the employee and chief recruitment. So let me start with a couple of recruitments that are underway.
Uh, Mayor Lieutenant Kennedy?
Yes, thank you. I would like to add this, we're, when we're still on the COVID. I'm really excited for the funds we've gotten, how we're pursuing them. But in the report that you've supplied to the council this next week, can you please also give a breakdown? I, of, I know we're, we've purchased chairs, tables, things of that sort there, uh, barricades, we're loading to businesses. Uh, it's important to realize that it's not theirs to keep. We'll be able to have that in inventory. But I'd like to have a list of that for council members. But I'd like to have a list of that, for council members, as we're out there talking to individuals, we can let them know, hey, we're pleased that we were able to supply these tables and chairs to this with your business. I think it's important that the council understands totally where every one of these dollars are going. Thank you.
And then, thank you for that comment, Mayor President Candy. As you guys are out and about in the public, please continue to make sure that you're letting businesses and citizens alike know what we're doing and to provide those safety measures. Because while we do everything humanly possible to get the word out, some may not know about it, or some don't realize that we're continuing to do so. So we're hitting every angle humanly possible to keep that communication open to our local businesses and our citizens alike. But please make sure that you guys are out sharing that as well. So I appreciate that.
Kind of anecdotally, just mentioned that a daycare in town called and said, hey, do you guys have any hand sanitizer? We had workshops and winery or two that called and said, hey, do you have any more tables? Do you have any more chairs? So we're doing the best we can to distribute those supplies, those products that we have, so we'll provide a recap. Okay, so number five is related to employee and chief recruitment, so this is kind of quick. We do have a building inspector, as you know, we had an opening to fill an existing position that is vacant currently, and we're winding down, we've found probably two or three applicants at this point, and so we're doing final interviews in the next day or two. This gives me an opportunity to let you know that this is a very, very busy building environment for our building inspectors, and Lisa's shared with us a number of times the amount of inspections that they're doing on a weekly basis. So we need to get someone in there quickly so we can provide the services to our community. There's a potential we're gonna have a maintenance worker opening, so that would be another recruitment. And also, we currently have a police officer, not the police chief, but the police officer recruitment underway as well. On the chief's recruitment, I did distribute to all of you the job description that we received from our consultant, and RJ, is there anything that you wanted to add on that?
No, it's up to your consideration to approve tonight, and this is a chance to modify it, if you see any modifications to it. We'll use it for the basis of the brochure that we'll send out. When we were looking at the chief's position in the city code, we did come across that there is a concurrence between mayor and city council to approve the job description by resolution. That's not typical for all the other job descriptions for the city, but for the police chief, that it was, and so that's why you're seeing it tonight, and the ordinance is attached to it for me to review to see where that came from.
And that was something that Chief was able to look at as well, and to include his input on to make sure that we weren't missing anything. So he definitely was able to have a look at that. And as a reminder, for the council members in the interim from September until we can find a permanent chief of police, Sergeant Morgan will work as interim chief for September and October, and Sergeant Jones will work as interim chief for November and December. And our goal and our timeline and the process, we will get laid out to you once we finalize all these steps that we just got.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to number six. If I was a drummer, I would do a drum roll. Harvard Road bid was awarded, contract was awarded today. So yay. I don't know anymore, I don't have a schedule, don't have any more information. I know Ben Schmidt is gonna have his handful coordinating with Washita on this project, but as we get more information, we will provide it. This is, this is the best place we could be right now, and we're just very appreciative, I think, of Washita moving this project forward. And just a reminder for those of you that are tracking the project, this project will add a new northbound lane on the existing structure, and construction was scheduled to start sometime this year and probably wrap up next spring. So again, it's just very, very, very positive saying, I think, for the commuters and the people that work in our community.
Yeah, and if I can just add, this is a, this is a huge thing to be excited about. As we've been on many calls during COVID, and the financial impact to all entities from city to county to state, that was one of the things of how projects are looking, and then moving forward and getting funding. So I can't reinforce enough how lucky and grateful we all are that this got awarded. So very, very excited about this. Any comments or questions on that?
Okay, Henry Rhodes, Design continues to progress. Our consultant has to make, meet a lot of thresholds to make the deadline, and just a reminder, we want a hundred percent design document by December 51st of this year. So that's gonna take a, there's a lot of extra work with utility coordination, right-of-way acquisition on the south end, a whole host of things. So again, that project is very active and is moving in a positive direction. And then before I go on to Department of Ecology, was there any other finance information, RJ, that you could share with the council or tell that we can answer your questions? Were there other financial questions?
I got a thumbs up, so he's good.
Thumbs up is good.
Do you want to give us just a brief how things are going? So last week, I shared the July dashboard report with you that had the details on the sales tax, also sent the detailed report, financials that have the revenue and expenses on there. I think we will, I want a chance to see the next sales tax ad until next week, so we'll be looking to see if our trends are continuing. My gut is telling me that we'll still be, for this city at least, we'll still be in a good shape. That's based on Lisa expressing how many permits are still going out, so we know there's still a lot of building activity. I do go to a search store here for hardware and building projects, and they're just as busy as ever, so I don't see a trend, trend slipping too much. But that does, you know, kind of cloud what happens going into next year, because we're only gonna be having three months' worth of data. I would say too, on the REIT, we did get our August 10th information from the county, in which includes the real estate excise taxes. We had a hundred and thirteen thousand collected for that one month. We've almost met our budget target for the year for REIT, which our budget target for the two REIT funds is about seven hundred thousand dollars, and we're sitting at six sixty-eight right now. So we're, we're almost there, we still have four months left of the year in that fund. And what that refund does help is when we talk about these capital projects and where some of this money comes from a match, these two refunds are designed to help for that.
And I will say, yeah, go ahead, Councilor Forrester.
Sorry, I did have one other question for RJ. Just curious, on the investment interest under miscellaneous revenue, we're only at like twenty-five percent budgeted amount, is there a reason for that? We're over halfway.
So I'm gonna investigate that further to make sure I understand, if we based on our, so what did happen at the beginning because of COVID is that the interest rates pretty much crashed, they're all down to zero. So LGIP, when we started this year, that's where we invested most of our money, from the local government's investment pool, it was close to about one point eight percent, it's down to about, I believe, point four. But let me get back more information, so that's why you're seeing a less than stellar return there. We do have a couple certificates of deposits that are gonna mature this month, so that might muff up that number a little bit more, but on the investment side, it's not looking very positive.
Thank you.
And I will say, as I'm out and about, I continue to get out to our local businesses to see how they are doing, and continue to hear positive things as of right now, with people supporting local businesses. So please keep sharing that message that we support local, because, because we don't know how this will impact in the next four months and moving forward.
Okay, so the next item on the, my report, this is almost an opportunity, excuse me, opportunity to just make you aware, I don't know that I'm asking you for feedback or input, but certainly if you want more information, we can dig into it. And this is the Department of Ecology statewide effort to modify and change one, single-use plastic bag. And so if you're not, haven't been following that, they're having some workshops, they're having some public hearings, and it looks like there could be a ban on single-use plastic bags, and that would come from the Department of Ecology. So this is my effort just to let you know. I know these things sometimes are well-received, it sometimes not, but certainly if you want more information and if you want to weigh in on it, I can certainly provide you information. There is a workshop next week that Lisa's gonna be covering related to this, so we will bring back more information as it becomes available. So anyway, I just wanted to make you aware of that. And then finally, in closing, event reservations and programs, we all know Farmers Market is on Saturdays, Sky House and Challenger Sport Camp is underway, our network analysis virtual open house is August 25th at 4:00 p.m., the chief's parade, yay, at Orchard Park, Saturday, August 29th at 2:00 p.m. This will be similar to the high school graduation parade, that's what I'm being told, and then the top block is September 5th. So now, and just in closing, Chief, I have one request, is if we need your advice, is it, can we still connect the phone and call you? I want to get this in the record.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Any other, Mayor Protem Candy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Katie, at our next, at our next meeting, could you, could you give us an update on the employees and stuff? I know with a lot of things, we don't have going on this, a lot of things in the parks this year, we normally have part-time employees that we hire. Can we get a number as of the next meeting, where we are with employees, and how many we would have had if everything was going on in all of our?
Yeah, so just so I understand, the request is, how many employees were budgeted that we froze and did not, how many positions are what we call vacant positions because they were frozen because of COVID? Is that your question?
Well, yeah, mainly, mainly because we, we've always had so much activity in the parks, and we've had a lot of overtime and things to start with, employees, we have extra employees that are hired. I'm curious if we have, how many extra employees we have now, and also what we would have had if we had a normal, normal existence without COVID this summer.
Yeah, I don't, absolutely, we can put that together.
Thank you.
And any other comments or questions regarding Katie's report? Not seeing or hearing anything. I believe that Bill Genoys' system is working, so I want to give him an opportunity. Bill? Bill? I got a message that it was working, but.
You know, I could call him on his phone.
No, not when you're.
You can do it.
So we will, we will, Bill, if you want to type it out and send it to us, you can try it that way as well. Otherwise, we'll do, we'll give you another opportunity for citizen comments. Okay, so workshop discussion, police department lighting and HVAC discussion. Chief Asmus?
And Mayor, members of the council, so tonight on the workshop discussion, there's a few things I want to go over and actually provide a little bit of internal clarification, not necessarily related to initially the HVAC units or the lighting, but to talk a bit about the solar panel battery backup system that we have. So I think there might be a little bit of confusion about that particular project, and just wanted to provide clarification. So the clarification is that the solar panel battery backup consists of three different components that have to work together. One is the solar panels themselves, the second piece is the battery storage, third piece is the three power converters. So we brought in a consultant to look at those pieces, and I can tell you that based on their evaluation, our solar panels are working very well. The batteries were inspected and are charging when they're supposed to charge and looks like that they are out, sensing a capacity. And we had one bad power converter, the consultant was able to return and reprogram that power converter and fix it. So all three power converters are showing that they are also functioning correctly. What we don't know is if all three of those components are working together to actually create a battery backup for the police department. The only way we can do that is for a test to have to be done. The test has to, basically, we have to shut power down to the entire police department and library building, and then switch over to the power inverters running off those batteries to see if the circuits that the batteries are hooked up to work. And it was strongly suggested that we use an electrician to perform that function test for us, and at this point, we have not had much success in aiming an electrician to do that work for us, but we continue to try to work down that path to see. The final piece of this is to fully test the system to see if it works. So all the components are working correctly, but what we do not know is if in fact the backup is working and has a complete system. So I just wanted to provide that information because some of the things that were at the last council meeting was, well, you know, the solar panels are working, right? Yes, they are, but what we don't know is that the entire system is functioning correctly together. So as soon as we can get an electrician on board to test that, we will know more if it's working or not. And if not, we will have to come up a different plan. So if there's, if there's any questions about that, I'll pause here, and if not, then I will move on to the HVAC and lighting portion of the building.
Any questions for Chief? Not seeing any?
Moving on to the next part of the HVAC and the lighting. So, you know, initially, this was done as a project done to propose by Ian Rusko, which had all three of these components. We decided to go to a different direction, and at one point, the plan was to wait, to see if the rooftop units at the building failed, then we would replace them at that point, or repair them at that point. And then at the last council meeting, it was requested that the city go out and prepare cost estimates for replacement of the rooftop units and lighting for the, the LED lighting for the PPE. And so you should receive the email from our city engineer, Ben Schmidt, to describe where we're at in that process. And so I know that the thought was to, hopefully by this time, to have numbers to look at, but because of the processes required, we don't have that yet, but are currently working on it. So just to summarize, Ben's email was that he has contacted parametrics to put together a task order for the subconsultant to formalize what exactly we need to replace those rooftop units, and once we have that, that information can then go out and we can receive estimates as to what the cost would be to replace the RTUs at the police department. So we're working on that, but it is not as quick of a process or turnaround time as we might have originally anticipated. So that's what we're waiting for at this point. With that, that's all I have in the workshop discussion, unless you have any questions. And I know that Ben is also in line to answer the technical stuff that I have no idea about.
Any questions or comments from the council? Councilor, we're done?
Hey, on quick one, Ben, can you recount if these two components, the HVAC units and the lighting, are in our Capitol facilities aging and assessment platform as recognized needing replacement or action?
Yes, they were recognized in that spreadsheet that details everything out as to what projects need to be done for the lighting and the HVAC. They don't specify the specific details of the project, but they do call them out.
Uh, so the age out is like current, right? The, those are items needing service based on our estimates?
Yes.
Cool. Could, could you, not in this session, but, um, provide the, uh, current synopsis of what all current capital facilities, we believe are on that, um, requiring maintenance renewal right now? I just want to stand those in comparison to what we know is also out there needing that kind of action.
Certainly. And I'll be able to identify, I'll try to put together other projects that I know about too, that need to be included on that if there are any missing.
Thanks.
Councilmember Forrester?
Yeah, uh, just, uh, just a question clarification, Perimetrics. The, the goal there is to basically have them identify a specific unit, a specific scope of work, basically for the rooftop units and the lighting, so you can send it out for bid. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, but, okay.
Uh, Mayor Proton Kennedy?
Is that not something, Ben, that you could do, be involved with?
Uh, I can certainly be involved with it. Um, so there's a, a kind of two schools of thought here. Basically, if we get the detailed scope of work, I, I can get those task orders back to define it, then we can have an apples and apples comparison to, uh, go out on that public works roster. Whereas if I were to go through and, um, work with all those contractors to identify the units, I mean, as you know, with projects, sometimes when you get contractors in your home, uh, you can get different scopes of works depending on the different contractor. And while I've done one HVAC design, I just want to make sure that, uh, we have a fair and accurate comparison a, across the board as we're going out to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, not hearing any. We will move on to act.
I do have an update from Bill Genaway.
Okay.
Um, so I spoke with Bill Genaway, he's the commissioner with the water district, and just real quickly, he wanted me to pass on that the hydrants in Liberty Lake are being locked for a variety of reasons, but wanted to ensure the, the integrity of the system and make sure there's not any cross, um, cross connections. Um, so as they work their way through that, in order to operate a hydrant, um, you need a hydrant remat and you need to go to a fill station. So that's where contractors are going. Um, as you know, last year we had the boil order, so this is, uh, their work to address those concerns. I will also say they had two major construction projects, one down in the Eastside Improvement Club area and the other on Green Ridge. Both of those projects are done or near done. Um, and then finally, there were some CAREDAC questions that don't have that, um, I will work with RJ and will do a bit of research and, and bring that back when I have more information. Um, you may not be aware, but the u, utilities did not receive any CAREDAC dollars, so there could be a potential opportunity there. So that was, uh, Bill's report.
Okay, moving on to action items. Mayor Proton Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, motion agenda one, move August 4th, 2020, council minutes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kamiskas. Any comments? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Motion consent agenda.
I heard it. Standby. I, I heard, I heard of one or two ayes. I want to make sure we got it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next one?
Motion approved August 18th, 2020 vouchers in the amount of $556,249.
I heard a second from Councilmember Severs. Discussion, uh, Councilmember Kurt.
I had a question on, um, page four. Um, there were several, there were three expenditures for almost the same amount, $2,614, but they don't have a scripter on the memo part. I was just wondering what those were for.
So which one, which one was that?
Uh, they're on, um, page four, and sort of in the middle, I, I think it's under Columbia of, well.
Columbia Ford Hyundai.
Yeah.
So that is the purchase of a Ford 250. It's split up three ways because it's hitting three different departments, um, streets, golf course, um, and parks. Um, so that's why you see it's split up three times. The description for it is just a little above there next to 37,000, 43, as described, will kind of pick up truck. Um, this did come for council back in, I think, February or March, uh, for, um, approval that it reverses on the state contract. We just had it delivered last week.
Okay. It just had like the furniture line. I know I wasn't sure what that was, but it must be a capital category.
If you could read the whole line item, if we had this page down there, it would say furniture and equipment and vehicle line item. So the capital expense line item.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council on that? Not hearing any. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have it. Moving on to general business.
You liked the way I waited for you and not jumped the gun?
I did. I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Very, very good. Uh, general business motion, one, approve, adding 2021 Ford S U V police interceptor, the amount of $55,633.34 to the previously approved 2020 order that was awarded to Gus Johnson Ford.
Second by Councilmember Forrester. Discussion. Councilmember Kamiskas?
Just a quick clarification. So this is strictly for, um, the vehicle, and then we, we still have the additional cost of getting it outfitted with the, the additional equipment, or is that all included? I can't remember. Doesn't it?
It's all in.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Dunn?
Hey, uh, quick note, did we check out the, um, the hybrid interceptor on this bid? Do a cost compare? No?
Great question.
Hang on.
So when we did the initial 2020, um, award, we did, uh, look at the, uh, hybrid. It, uh, is quite a bit more expensive. Um, and then when you, uh, cost out the fuel savings, um, over several years, um, it really doesn't pencil out for considering how long we keep the patrol cars. Um, the agility I have before you tonight is, uh, really to just add, um, an additional car that was already awarded, um, so that, uh, we weren't really able to change, uh, change that with, uh, for the purposes we're looking at tonight.
Gotcha. Grateful for, and I definitely don't want to, um, interrupt ongoing in terms of acquisition. I think I, I think I encountered a cost model circulated by the City of Spokane for total vehicle, um, operating cost that painted a picture on these, um, hybrid interceptors as total life about five or six thousand less than a traditional gasoline operated. Interestingly, it was based on what police cars do the most of their time, idling. Anyway, um, next round, if you don't mind, we'd love to try and just, um, make sure that we're, uh, confirming cost models for total cost of operation. Might be a good thing.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunn. Any other questions or comments? Okay, not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? I have it. Next one?
Yep, general business number two, motion to approve the authorization of purchase for the network firewall, Gate Tech Incorporated for the police department and City Hall in amounts of $1,590 plus shipping sales tax.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kamiskas. Discussion, Mayor Proton Kennedy?
Is, I, I assume this is the item where we're able to get the funds from COVID?
That is correct.
Okay, that's a good, very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Kamiskas?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions, um, seeing that this kind of falls in my, my, uh, professional wheelhouse. Um, question, my first question is, um, what was the, the bid process on this? And did we go out for competitive bids? Were there others?
We looked at a one-year quote, uh, on this one. The one in four years to go three years out. Our bid process, uh, because it, we're classifying it, uh, one year, under 15,000 is to get free quotes. So that is the procurement process that we did.
Okay. Um, so the next, uh, next question is maybe more of a housekeeping, or I accidentally printed the same page twice, but this has quote Q00272143 for 14,576 and quote ending in 145 for $2,022. And the pages that I have were both for the first quote. Did I actually print the same page twice, or did we not get a copy of the second quote?
No, you didn't get a copy of the second quote. That is my, um, that is, that is an oversight. So I apologize. The second quote is going to be, um, it is, so the second quote is going from the, uh, the, the agenda summary was, uh, the quote number is on there was for $2,022. Um, that would be a firewall that would be right here at City Hall.
$2,022. All right. Um, my third question, I guess, was, is again, since this is, um, my company actually does the, does this, but I took them out of the equation. There actually is a local company that just provides Fortinet hardware and service. Um, I was just kind of curious if they had been reached out to, um, because they actually went, since this document was on, was in the public domain, uh, in our agenda, I, I reached out to one of the owners and, um, they are actually able to do it cheaper, but I don't know what that protocol is.
Okay. Um, so if your recommendation is you'd like to see us to get more quotes and hold this, we can go through, uh, a lengthier, uh, not lengthier process, but we can make sure we include more companies into this?
Yeah, I know, we're going to kind of catch 22. I understand, I totally understand the importance of having this protection, hands down. Totally understand and, and glad that, um, Todd picked up on this. Um, but I just, you know, want to make sure also, even though it's COVID dollars, I want to make sure we're spending those dollars wisely. It's about a, on, on the first one, the, that came in at 14,576, it came in a, um, a little over $500 left. And that includes tax. I don't think the one that we have includes tax.
Understood.
So if I exclude the tax, just on the, the larger one, 14,576 minus 12,85.6, it's a savings of 1,690, which is fairly significant in my, my book.
So what I'm hearing is, you know, if I'm understanding what you're hearing saying is you'd like us to, uh, kind of sharpen our process and, and, uh, make sure we're getting the best price and then bring this back again.
I would, but I also. That would be my ask, but I also don't want to put the city at risk with regards to, you know, security either. So it's an option. But I guess my question would be to Todd is, you know, how vulnerable are we and how long would getting additional quotes, not just from this other company, but, you know, just widen the net a little bit and see what we can come up with.
Yeah, and I'm looking at Todd, and right now he's in, he's in the, uh, happily have someone who's running out of battery life on their Surface Pro, and he's going to be right.
I just, uh, just something, I just need a charger for mine that's showing me. I don't have one here.
I just. So he's going to grab one and then get back to you. Cause we were looking, uh, when we reached out to three other companies, um, Dad Tech being one of them, uh, he's got more of the particulars around upper level of companies. We talked, um, about, cause I, I think if you look on the quote on the 14,5, you're going to see kind of discount rate and what the value is over is for three years. So we were applying products versus, because we have he's back. So I'm going to let him talk. Don't get myself in trouble because I am outside my wheelhouse. We also have, uh, from Data Tech, we have, uh, George also on the line as well. Uh, we have Cisco, uh, Cisco, it's a 5505, it's end of life.
Right.
It's been end of life quite some time. It's actually the only firewall we have at the police station. So our city actually goes through to the police station to make a connection. So, um, that's why the, uh, pressure to get replacements in as soon as possible. The other thing is we were looking at a high availability H A, which is basically an active passive, um, firewall. So if one firewall goes down, we have another one in replacement, kind of redundancy, uh, if you may. Um, George, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Well, real, real quick, if Todd, if I may stop you, the, the, the SKU is out, is called out on the quote, and so the, the, the figure that I got is that exact same thing. So we're not looking at a different, a different firewall. We're looking at the exact same Fortinet hardware.
Correct.
Yes. Hello? Hello?
Did you hear his response?
No.
Yeah, the hardware is going to be pretty much the same, except that we're adding additional, uh, firewall in, in, uh, for an active passive. And also.
I understand that.
City Hall to secure City Hall.
Right, I understand that. Unfortunately, that we don't have a copy of the, of the second quote. Um, so again, that brings me back to, you know, i- is, is it going to hurt to, to take, you know, a little bit more time to sharpen the pencil and, and get this back out there? Um, because I'm, I'm looking at already a savings of almost $1,700 just on the first quote.
It would be a two-week delay.
Well, I don't know, it's a two-week delay and whether or not.
Where, just hold on a second.
So it would be a two-week delay and could be problematic, especially, uh, for our wall security. We can't even patch that firewall at this point?
So how long has, have we been in this situation? If, if we've been in this situation for, for months and months and months, or however long it is, is two weeks going to make that much of a significant difference as opposed to the money that we might save the taxpayers?
Well, one is the timeline for the COVID amount, right? Correct. So I, um, so Todd had hired on in March, um, so he's been attempting to evaluate systems. So he brought up the firewall issue to me through, uh, through his analysis back here early in August. So we, um, we decided, uh, because we did realize that this was a COVID opportunity, um, and, uh, and we did have more people working off-site than we had before. Um, so we had a lot more potential off-site, um, intrusion. Uh, so yeah, I, I, I agree with you. I wish we would have had known about this issue well past this, that this should have been in the budget, uh, for 2020 to replace. So Todd brought it to our attention back in August. Um, and so we wanted to get it patched up. We do feel like we have a weakness there. Um, uh, we went through three companies, you, uh, Councilmember Kamiskas, you have, uh, experience with other companies around. So if you have other companies that we should be contacting, uh, if we have to wait a couple weeks, uh, we can bring this back in two weeks, um, that, that would be the, the delay that we would have. That would be the delay that we would have.
Yeah, so I guess I would move to delay this until we, until we, to get, until we get a couple more quotes, because it could possibly save us quite a bit of money. And again, realizing it's COVID dollars, but that's still taxpayer money from somewhere.
Could I ask for this, just to speed up the process? So if you're all in agreement that we do need a new, a new, gosh.
Firewall.
Firewall, all right, excuse me. Could you give us the authority to purchase that based on the best quote that we can get, so we don't have to wait the two weeks? Because while we have the, two weeks hasn't been a long time, we don't want to see happening with those two weeks. And if you're in concurrence of, if you get the best quote, please move on. We can do that, you see a baseline that we have here already. It's kind of thinking outside the box, but it gets us to move a little bit more expediently. And it gives you this to feel that we are, make sure we're checking all vendors in the area too.
Yep, sure. Yeah, so what, so are we looking at, so first of all, I'll rescind the motion I just made that nobody responded to. But I would move that we give the authority to approve the purchase of the firewall and the required firewall and software up to a maximum of what's reflected in this agenda bill.
Motion on the floor, we should vote on that.
No, we can make, so we can make a motion within that, and then we go back and vote on the original. That's where Jurassic Pro that comes in.
What happened to Sean?
I'm right here, mayor, can I speak?
Please.
So obviously you can make a secondary motion if you want to move it and/or change to a second, a secondary position, which is if up to the amount or less, if you want staff to do something different or go through the bidding process. Obviously, there has to be a second of that, and you can move forward on that motion. Councilmember Fullier's position with regard to a motion on the table, yes, unless you want to take the motion that would be made after, and you vote on that for approval, and that would table it, if you will. Or you can then, if there's not a second, then you move forward on the motion that's pending.
Mayor Protem Kennedy.
I assume we're still in the comment period? What I, I appreciate you catching this, I really do, appreciate you catching this, I did not see that. What I'm hearing is that it'll be two weeks, be two weeks before we could probably get the bid. So based on that, I don't really see a priority that we delay this until our next meeting. Because at that meeting, we have, have all the additional information to make the proper decision.
But that's why I changed my motion, Mike, to move, to allow the staff to move forward with the purchase after receiving up to a maximum of what is already listed in the agenda bill, after getting additional competitive quote. So that way they don't have to wait on that for September 1st.
Well, I don't see a challenge in waiting for us until September 1st. Because when they get the bids and stuff, and they come back to us, then that will be the process. If this was something that had to be done immediately, I could see, I could certainly see that. But by RJ saying, you know, at least two weeks, that tells me it could go a little bit further than that.
I'm saying that the, I'm saying the next problem is in two weeks. I'm saying we might be able to move faster than that in getting something secured through an exact bid and outweighing the two weeks. Because the other thing we are getting, we're talking about a week missing our firewall in public meetings.
Yep. It took me less than 30 minutes to get, to get the quote that I got.
Councilmember Dunn.
Hey, I'm all for, I'll call it an NTE or some effect, if that's the second that's on the table here, so that the staff can proceed to act, and no greater than what Noel got laid down in the quote today.
Yep. So is that a second, Dan?
The second, I seconded it. Chris.
Did I?
Councilmember Kurtz, I actually heard her first earlier after Councilmember Comiscus's motion, so that was her second. I did catch that, Councilmember Kurtz, so thank you for that second. All in favor for Councilmember Comiscus's? Mayor Protem Kennedy.
Please repeat what the motion is.
The motion is to give staff the approval to move forward with spending up to, and including what is a maximum or what is on the agenda bill for these firewalls and software to go with it, after going out to get additional competitive bids.
And we have a second.
Yes, we do.
Councilmember Kurtz seconded that.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, moving forward, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are we good? Everyone clear?
And so that, so that wipes off the, that wipes the original motion out, Sean?
No.
So from the standpoint of approval, so of what you want to do with this, it didn't eliminate it. You still have to vote on the original motion, but essentially, the premise would be you guys would vote accordingly and would decline that motion that was originally passed.
That's what I was going to say earlier.
Thanks for the clarification. Did we have a second on the original?
Yes.
Okay, so we have to vote on that.
Okay. Everyone clear?
We need to take a vote on the original. Okay, there you go.
That's what I'm doing. All in favor? All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it? Okay, are we good?
I'll send over the, I'll send over the contact information for Cascade Defense. They were, they were here in Liberty Lake, they just recently moved to the valley. And then whoever else you have.
Okay. General business number three.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to authorize the mayor to approve supplemental agreement number one, the amount of $16,531 for KFPP Inc. for additional agency coordination related to the Harvard Road Bridge Project.
Second.
Councilmember Comiscus with the second, discussion? Not hearing any, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? I have it. Resolution?
Resolution number 20-278, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. The resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, adopting qualifications for the chief.
Motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move motion as read, resolution 20-278.
Second?
Second.
That was from Councilmember Severs, I believe?
Correct.
Discussion? Discussion? Okay, not hearing any? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay. First rate?
City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number 10A. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, repealing ordinance number 10, establishing rules and regulations for taking travel observation, advance of travel funds, and reimbursement of expenses.
Okay. Second?
City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington, ordinance number 268. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending the City of Liberty Lake Development Code to allow, quote, automobile, manufactured home, recreational vehicles, trailer and boat sales and rentals, end quote, and, quote, boats, recreational vehicles and trailers, construction, repair, parts, sales and maintenance, end quote, of limited use of in the sea on.
Motion?
I move ordinance 268?
Second.
Second, discussion? Any citizen comments? Not hearing any? All in favor of ordinance number 268?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? I have it.
Ordinance number 67-C, City of Liberty Lake, Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, amending ordinance number 67-C past October 2, 2018, amending business likely regulations for the City of Liberty.
Motion, motion to approve ordinance number 67-C.
Second.
Second by councilmember Fullier, discussion? Not hearing any citizen comments for number, ordinance number 67-C? Seeing any? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have it. Introduction of upcoming agenda items.
Thank you, mayor.
Mr. Mayor? May I be allowed to go back to item number 12, ordinance number 10A, repealing ordinance 10? I know that we will be, when it comes in for a second reading, we'll have abilities for questions there. But quite honestly, the way this is reading, this is where ordinance number 10 may create conflict with current or future changes to the city financial planning policy. I know we have a policy which is 67 pages. I just feel that we need, we need the council to be able to have a discussion on why this 10 is being thrown out and what possible conflict it would have with the policy we already have. And that can be done in our next meeting, I just want to go on record.
Okay. Introduction of upcoming agenda items.
So we have a number of items, I'll go over real quickly. We do have another 6pm workshop. My understanding is the council desires to discuss roles and responsibility for the city council, as well as procedures. So we will be putting some information together related to that. I did get someone, facilitator for that meeting, so we will run some ideas around here and reach out to you before the meeting.
Also, with that, if you have a preference at AWC or MRC, or have any other questions or comments, please make sure and get those to Katie.
And then we have a proclamation declaring September 2020 a childhood cancer awareness month. We're asking that you also approve an easement for Ridgeline High School traffic signal. That signal, I believe, is in design right now, and we'd like to bid it so that it's in place as near as one of those high schools opens as possible. So we need an easement from the adjacent property owner. We're also looking at a ready approval of a resolution related to the final class of River Crossing East, first edition. We have a second re-ordinance, repealing ordinance 10, and we'll add the comments, we'll address the comments that were brought up by Mayor Protem Kennedy. We also will be adding a donation of $800. We do have a citizen that's wanting to donate to our collection, and so Jocelyn will be bringing forward a donation of $800 from that citizen. And then finally, I just received a text from Jen, she let me know related to seasonal. Last year and in our budget this year, we had budgeted 32 seasonals for her cruise. Today, we have 16 seasonal, so half of the number of seasonals are onboard.
Thank you for giving that, I appreciate that.
Okay, this is your next opportunity for citizen comments. Any citizen comments? Please signify by chat button so we can acknowledge it. Give you a second to work that out. Anything further from the council?